Stand for the pledge, please. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. Welcome all. Let's start off by wishing Mike here a happy birthday.
Thank you.
Birthday today.
Thank you.
Fifty-five?
Yeah, no, not that much. Feeling good.
All right. Everyone have a chance to look over the bills?
Yes.
Or motion to accept?
I have your motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried? Approval of the November ninth, eighteen minutes?
I make a motion.
I did not see the email like that.
You have to understand.
I'll second.
Yeah, I might have read out again.
I reviewed mine, so I have gotten them.
Do you want to copy any?
Are the, you have the message in there?
From last one?
Yeah, they weren't from the...
Part of the map from...
Okay.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, I'm not sure how to think about it.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't look at the email before, a little bit before coming, so I didn't know if I was going to get something to ask for, but... I didn't have a chance to look at them.
You want to table that for the next meeting? Approval? For who? Has everyone looked at them?
At least put them on our website. I don't have a problem either way. I reviewed them fine.
Let's wait the next meeting. Okay. Mayor's report. Been pretty quiet. We, uh, we had a tree park committee meeting. Uh, we got a couple out. They're brainstorming things for the park. Trying to prioritize projects for the park. And, uh, trying to, uh, pick together a mission statement for the village. And, uh, all this would be, uh, very helpful when we go for grants in the future. They look highly on that, or the state looks really high on that when you're trying to go for grants and all that. Very serious in what you're doing and, uh, with a mission statement, uh, to help our cause.
Have you been drawing, um, from the huckleberry?
Uh, no, not actually, no.
That might be...
We've gone up to the park though and looked over the park and collectively see what projects need to be done and we're trying to prioritize what we can do with our general budget and, uh, what we can possibly do in the future with corporate sponsorship and, uh, and grant funding, so. We're trying to prioritize things like the, uh, front pavilion getting that concrete floor in there. The back pavilion needs to be tore out and re- redone. I got quotes today from built through contracting, so we have some budget figures to go by. And I have those figures. Some little things, even like new trash receptacles that are a little more appealing for the park. Moving that library in the park to higher land. Right now it's in a lowland where it floods with water, so we want to get that moved. Little things like that, you know, we can do easily in-house. But, uh, you know, we've got another meeting coming up and, uh, we meet the first Wednesday of each month. But everyone's welcome to attend those. We're discussing the bathrooms now and I'll talk to, talk about that when we get here. So we're, we're making a lot of headway and, uh, we're looking good. Very, all the members are very enthusiastic. Should like to have them all in more. Uh, I want to thank all the, uh, everyone involved. Special thanks to Courtney Renee and Barb Zinner here in the village office. For again organizing our Christmas tree ceremony. Put a lot of work into that. They did a great job. We had the FFA and the urgent Methodist underground and crafts at the park for the kids. Mr. and Mrs. Claus were there. They have a fifth and sixth grade school band there. They have singing silhouettes. And, uh, thank you to Gregory Stu for helping the hot chocolate. Hope I didn't forget anyone. It was a good time, a great time ahead by all that were there. Uh, it was packed, the biggest crowd we've seen. Everything was about it. I look forward to next year and, uh, again, thank you Courtney for all your work. A couple of trustees were there, giving out hot chocolate to the kids, so it was a good one. It wa- it was a good time. And I want to thank the urgent fire department for being in the way. They always do a great job for us. Not only with their fire EMS protection for our village, but all the, uh, social events that they take hard and so. Many thanks to all these, urgent fire department. I did attend their meeting last night. Actually Monday night. And, uh, they've had forty-five calls in November, so they're very active. They had their election of officers. Couple of the races were very tight, uh, but, uh, Kevin Group again, uh, was elected as chief of the fire department. And also I want to thank the urgent crew for setting up and tearing down everything for the tree lighting ceremony. A lot of work goes into that, so. Thanks, thanks to everybody. We tore up that sewer line, storm sewer on Spring. I've got pictures on my phone with it. It was incredible, the amount of roots. Incredible. I'm talking ten, fifteen feet long sections of just wide of roots. And it was pretty much the whole way, so. Our guys did a great job of excavating it, replacing the pipe that's been replaced. And, uh, that flooding issue that we have now that now should be eliminated, so I can't get done. Come spring will regrade better than it is now. Again, I have pictures on my phone. It was incredible to see those roots. There is a big willow tree there and, uh...
Is that the entire pipe remnants replaced or is it just a section?
I'd say we did eighty feet. We were clean because we had Spencer coming with our camera and they shot from both, both ends. So we were, we knew where we were good. Could help our, the block had just started, but once it started, it was completely blocked, so. Spencer.
How long did it take?
They did it, uh, what, a day?
One day, but they skipped over five days, so two more hours.
Yeah.
So ten hours total.
So they come in late, but I'm saying, or they just, they, it was two hours?
They actually left early the day before.
Oh, okay, so they prepared for it?
Yeah, and it's a patient, yeah.
Wow, that sounds like a huge job.
Yeah, yeah. So it's, it's, it's been taken care of and, uh, it's good. Sewer plant's been running well. I did put a thing in here. Resident called and, uh, with a sewer concern and, uh, we sent Chris Fay over. And he handled the resident's concerns with, uh, very courteous courtesy and, uh, very professional in the way he handled, handled the resident's situation and, uh, got a call saying, uh, the resident contacted me saying, uh, how impressed he was with the service that, uh, that Chris provided, so I want to put a shout out for Chris for that. Uh, we're still waiting for all the equipment for sewer upgrades. Not much we can do until we get that, uh, again, they are going to start the manhole work. Return the, uh, the leakages and all these manholes. And they should be starting that, uh, probably up to New Year's, I would think, Courtney?
Yeah. It's just, everything's backed up, uh, getting at equipment, but, uh, the majority of the problem is getting pipe. It, it's, it, of all things, pipe, even a, you know, four, six, eight inch pipe is impossible to get right now. In the back order is, so they're, they're thinking, uh, mid-January they're hoping it gets started, but the DUC is pushing to, the, the, the DUC wanted to come for a site vision, I think, thinking that would be done, but, uh, our engineers like, hey, we haven't started yet, we, like, we literally just got the equip, some of the, the equipment in, uh, and they can't get any of the pipe. So it's back order and they've gone out to, uh, everybody who sells it and it was just, just not up there.
But they can do that in the winter?
Yeah.
Yeah, we can excavate around the manholes and seal those in the winter. The plan is to get it done before the spring thaw when all that infiltration...
Oh, prior?
Prior, yeah, prior to the thaw, so, you know, we don't get all the infiltration at the sewer plant.
Yeah, they, I think the UV, the UV's here, not here, here, but they have it stocked. The generator, you know, written home, when, maybe summer for that, and the screen, maybe twenty twenty-four, you know?
Doing the best they can. They're just waiting for this. Our electric guys have been busy, I know they've been to Churchville for a couple of days now, right Paul?
They're a real, a real good guy for us. Very professional crew and they thank, thank you to the village of urgent from the village of Churchville for, for sending them to us.
Wow. Goes both ways. You're always there for us, Churchville's always there for us. We're glad to help you out. Okay, other than that, you know, they've been, uh, routine substation maintenance, they've been hanging on to Christmas decorations up on the iPhones. Tree trimming, uh, they removed a tree at Hickory Park. I want to say that, uh, I did contact PLM Engineering to get started on, uh, the initial study for their, our substation. So has he sent you any paperwork, Courtney? Oh, that should be forthcoming any day. To do the study, to see, uh, cost analysis, equipment analysis and to, uh, see exactly where, uh, where we're at. We're going to be moving forward on this new substation, so.
Have we used PLM before? First time?
Uh, I don't know if we've used PLM. They, they're highly regarded. They, I know they've done other substations for the communities. They did Frankfurt, they did Bath, they did, uh, Fairport. And, uh, contacted people that have used them and they're... Evidently we have used, he's been here before because I asked, his name's Mike Barrett. And I talked to Mike on the phone and I said, I think we met, I think it was when I was superintendent. So it's going back, but he, he remembered our two stations, so he, he's, he's got some knowledge of our system. He comes highly, very highly regarded, so. We use PLM, uh, they're our, not our NIPA. They're with our NIPA who we buy our supplemental power through. They oversee that for all the, for most of the communities.
So how does that work then if they're initiated, like, do, are we paying them for this initial cost and equipment study and how does that work with?
There'll be, yes, like I said, there's going to be a charge for engineers. And then, uh, when they come back with the cost of study, what it's going to cost to do this project, then we'll bring it to the board for approval.
What kind of cost is that for that initial thing? I'm just wondering, is that something where, like, you don't have to go out for that, for bid, you just contact a company that you want?
For engineering, you don't have to go out?
Yeah, it's something that's part of professional services, like engineering or, uh, or attorneys, you don't have to go out for bid. But the, the work he's doing, the guy's doing right now doesn't, doesn't have to cost us anything, but it's when he, they look at together the figures that as to what the, his, what his cost is going to be and then what he thinks the substation is going to be. See what the numbers are going to look like. It probably will be pretty scary.
Yeah, what is the initial, like, time estimate for when that information will be gathered and presented? Is there a timeline on that or not?
I don't have that right now.
Okay, just curious.
We'll, we'll supply PLM with all the information we had. We had a study done with National Grid a few years ago, uh, which, which dealt with our transmission line, so it shows our capacity on our trans, which is important to know, so you know how big of a station to build. Where the deficiencies were in that transmission line, what had to be done to get, like, power factor up on that, so, you know? We'll, we'll supply them all the data we have, all our load data and, uh, our peak loads. And, uh, he'll look over the whole, uh, the, the whole operation here because, well, I mean, we have another substation over here, okay, and it's going to impact, well, it was by the, well, now there's some other name now, but... So he, he's got to look at the whole picture here, what's best...
A couple of months, you're thinking for that?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'm thinking that. Yeah. And then we're going to sit down with the Genesee County Economic Development also and sit down and give them, here's what it's going to cost, can you help us out? Can the state help us out? Can you help us out? Can somebody help us out? Because it's going to be a big ticket. Okay? But we're at the point where the station's nearing its, uh, you know, it's forty years is a standard for a substation. It's going to take at least five years from start to finish to get a new station. Once you start, it's going to take at least five years before that station's energized. Even the engineer's telling me that, so. We, we're going to have capacity issues, we're going to have voltage issues. We keep adding load up in the industrial park. And, uh, it's, it's time that we have to look at another station, so. As we get that information, uh, we'll bring it to the board, okay?
Thanks.
That's all I got, Courtney.
I have just a couple of things I want to hit on. Derek McGrane, uh, is answering more schools this week and next week at Sewer School. There's four courses he has to take. There was a opening in this course, uh, which is the first of the four. Originally he was scheduled to take course number two, three, four, and then one. But luckily there was a, uh, opening in this course and they put him in this one, so he'll have them in order. Chipped about, uh, some upgrade project. Cybersecurity, I told you guys about the, uh, the New York Power Authority and Homeland Security, uh, have a program to, uh, check out cybersecurity. Ours came back extremely, extremely well. There's only, uh, six problems and that seems like a lot, but it's not. Uh, other places have dozens, pages and pages. All our issues revolved around, uh, the security system, our panic buttons. So we're just updating our, uh, security certificates and, uh, a little newer software and, so it was great. We're happy with that. I, I want to, um, the mayor, just to thank everybody for tree lighting, but I'd like to do the same. My work went really well and takes a lot of people and I appreciate, uh, everybody's help, but especially Barbara Renee. It's closing. So, uh, yeah, I said you all right by your forty. The other thing is that our, we have, the heat payments came, um, and we get a large check for everybody that's heating the village. So our, our CD volts are even better than usual. You know, getting up in the winter time. We did have a problem with our electric bill from Grid today. Looked, came to look at, called NIPA, talked to Mark, all the, the power authority. Uh, the bill doesn't look great at all. And so, you know, we're trying to, it's only five hundred fifty-eight dollars.
Yeah, that's not right.
That's not right, and then last month...
We'll take it.
Well, we, I'll take it, but I feel like they'll nail us next month.
Yeah, they will.
Um, so we're trying to get to the bottom of why it's so low. I mean, last, last month we had a credit because of, you know, the settlement that, that everybody got. But this month maybe they shouldn't do that low. Especially, you know, it's not cold, so. So we're looking to the bottom of it.
That was from Grid?
Yes.
Okay. So you might wonder why National Grid, but we, our transmission line is National Grid. So they, they deliver the power to our substations, so we have to pay them charges to move that, you know, electricity across their lines to our, to our system, so.
Um, what was the, the snow removal log? What was the, what log?
Yeah, so one of the things that our, uh, our insurance company wants us to put in place is snow removal log. And that, that, as Paul, they, they're required to do it, uh, for their insurance. The insurance company wants us to have a log and fill it in every single time somebody goes out for snow removal. They want to know, you know, date, time, they want to know the weather conditions, when they start and when it's over. And it just, I don't know, it just seems excessive and I, I'm not sure what it would use, use for.
Is there any kind of timer when the plow hits the ground? Does some turn on and say they love so much and that? I'm just curious because they go by, uh, they go by my house, uh, three, three there. No snow on the road at all, dragging that plow down the road. And I just could never figure that out. Dry road, now we've had a little snow, but they'll go down that and it's just not the wing thing, it's there to scrape in the damn pavement and I'm just wondering what, is there a reason for that, Paul?
You've got a lot of overlap there. Town of Riga comes through and turns around, uh, at Rochester Street usually first and then the town of Virgin comes through and then they overlap to, um, Shred Road, they turn around there, so you've got the overlap, so. Uh, yeah, you see the town of Virgin, the village of Virgin and the town of Riga in, in that little bit of an intersection. So that's, that's what, everybody's overlapping, I think, that's all it is.
Okay. So, yeah, that's something I, I want to bring up because I'm not, I, I don't, I'm not sure if they're going to require it, like, make us do it. They just don't seem reasonable to me.
They didn't give like a rationale for this is why we need that?
No, they're just, this is how the recommendations are put this place.
Courtney, you might be able to use some of Google Sheets right on their cell phones and just, you know, thumb turning on a phone and then two or three little check marks and be done. And then it'll all come back to you. If you need any help with that, let me know, we set that up for our COVID tracking and it worked out really well, so. Just thinking that you could probably deal with that too.
Oh, have you heard of anything like this before?
You've been at this a long time. I know you're spreading salt, uh, the DUC wants you to track it. Uh, the village of Churchville doesn't do it fortunately, the town of Riga does it for the village of Churchville, so don't, the village of Churchville doesn't do it, so I am. Then I, when I worked in sponsor support though, we did, anytime we sold it, we had to fill out a ticket, but, uh, it wasn't as, it wasn't as much information, just basically how much you used and when, um, and, and the locality that you did it in. Maybe something's changed, um, I don't know, it's been twelve or fourteen years since I've sold it in sponsor support, so for the state. I thought it was something the DUC that they wanted, because they know that you buy so much salt, your delivery people report that they delivered X amount to, to you. And I think the DUC just wants to know that it's, where it's going and...
Yeah, so I'm not sure why the insurance company wants it.
It doesn't surprise me at all.
Possibly if there's accidents and people still out there.
Who knows?
Maybe the wrong conditions.
Todd would have been a good one to ask, he, he's done it recently through the town of Riga, so, but unfortunately he's not here, but you might be able to reach out to him and ask him, you know, if they're doing anything similar.
Okay. It'd be a good one to check with.
Todd did, uh, Dave did too.
You got anything else? Okay, everyone's got the CEO's, CEO's report? Any questions on the CEO's report? If not, I'll entertain a motion to accept CEO's reports.
I'll make a question.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Privilege of the floor.
The wire at seventeen Clinton is on, it won't be a jerk.
Okay.
He checked in the house, just to check to see what it was in the building. He was the old telephone line.
That's what it was, yeah.
And seventeen doesn't have a light one anymore, so he took the plate and cut the wire.
Seventeen, Clinton?
He cut the wire below ground, so it's just abandoned in place.
Okay.
And it's not going to be filed by anyone.
Losing the right of way. Check out when you change poles out, you should call the old pole, say, how high was it, maybe eight feet near it?
But it was ready to fall over, so.
Yeah.
Now, now they all seem to go around it, doesn't go around anymore. Oh, you, you totally blew her mind. And she got a hold of us, the mayor was here about the pole. I go, well, yeah, because he used to be the electric guy, that's why, he was the guy that had it. Did you tell him? I go, I said it in the meeting. He's the one that shortcuts, he knows about the telephone and stuff. She was just blown away that the mayor came to look at the pole in the front yard.
That's taken care of, that's... Anything else?
The yeast, the yeast basket up at the park, it's missing the top right bolt. Uh, or the bolt, I think, is still in the rim. Because the rim isn't just a piece this way, this way, it's got a thing in front of it that covers it up. So the bolt probably fell in there, that's why it rattles when you hit it, hit the rim with the pole. But the nut didn't know where to be found, so. It's still got three bolts on it, but it's missing the top right one, it should look at the basket, so.
Exactly, I'm bored.
Maybe the nuts up there, someone might, I couldn't see it, I'm trying to do it.
I have one thing to fund me.
We're going to get to trustee concerns in a moment.
Oh, sorry.
Soon as the floor is...
I'll be patient, I thought that was hard to handle.
Robin, anything?
Yeah?
All right. Trustee concerns, Emily?
No.
Good, Mike?
Nothing for me, Matt.
Well, you know I do.
I'm going to say the bolt looks good, I like the decorations, um, great. That's also pretty good, could make the work, the office looks good, so, just wanted to say hello.
Thank you, Paul.
Yeah, we, uh, my question is, and I'll, I'll get shut down because it's a safety issue and they have been getting shut down on speed and all that stuff, you know? But, uh, I don't remember ever seeing a place where fifty-five miles an hour was the speed limit to go by businesses and stuff, by the, uh, the, uh, everybody pumps, the, the, uh... And the reason I bring this up is because I, I get more people shaking their, you know, I get some gifts and I get on nineteen to go home and I'm not going to get up to sixty miles an hour because I got to turn and, you know, turn down the road, so I mean, had people go by me with a horn and it seems to me to be unsafe that they don't at least knock her down through the intersection.
Will you talk up to the corner?
Yeah, thirty-two and nineteen.
That's fake.
Well, I, I, see, I don't care who's in charge.
Go to the town and start their idea.
I'm just saying, it just seems odd that you go by the gas stations and the seven elevens and businesses and fifty-five.
Fifty-fourty-five at this, if you look at your map right here, it is not any of it inside the village. We don't even have a leg to stand on to some other, we could support-
Or the town, right?
If they decided to do a petition or a study.
They did a host, Anna, when she was mayor, did a host study up there.
They wanted it dropped to forty-five.
And they said there weren't enough accidents up there. The war changing, changing things up there. And she tried.
She tried just before, just after the pavement, the relinement.
Right. I agree. I think it's too fast going through there, but there's been accidents there, many accidents, but the DOT says no. There's, doesn't war changing anything up there, so.
It just doesn't seem like-
It's, it's already been tried and-
Well, I knew I was going to get nowhere on that there, but I thought I'd bring it up.
Yeah.
Because I don't like being haunted when I'm just trying to get home, you know. It just seems dangerous because it's straight through, you know. I've never seen that coming up on the stoplight.
It's, yeah, it's, the whole area is dangerous. You come through late, even if you turn it out of the restaurant on the nineteen, cars are doing fifty-five coming through that intersection, you know.
Thing, yeah.
Heading north, uh, same thing. They're right on you, you don't realize it. Again, the state says no, you know.
Yeah. Things can change though.
Well, this is just done. That study was just done that long ago.
When they repaved it.
Yeah.
Either just before or just after.
We'll talk two years.
Thank God they relined it probably because it was four lanes.
Well, see, that's the thing though, but they use that, I've been passed. I've been passed. Yeah, I'm only going twenty feet down the road and they, they go, they don't care that there's not a thing there. They make their own.
I do, I do think, you know, I was kind of skeptical about the reline, just, just relining it, but that did help.
Helped a lot. I, I understand that's a great thing, but, but then again, when you got people that just go through it, I mean, you know, they passed. Illegal, literally illegally passed.
They should have put turning arrows though at the, at the lights.
Probably those people were doing that.
That would save lives no matter, so like the speed limit or.
Because of anything crazy, you know.
I just, I just get so frustrated.
They're not turning arrows?
Arrows, no, there's no arrows. It's just solid green lights.
Oh, you're saying on the lights. I was thinking, I was picturing the roads.
I've, I've done behind people who've turned in front of cars and smashed.
Yeah, I don't think there's any consolation to the people that may die someday on there that, that we did a study.
No, I agree.
So how's it my feeling? I like the point that's out, if, you know.
I know the village tried and they shot, shot it down. State shot it down, so.
I don't, I don't understand that.
Anything else?
I'm good. No, thanks. Okay. I said my piece.
New business. Courtney, you want to bring us up to speed on this video conference?
Sure.
So this local law is put together by near council mayors. And they sent it out. It's just something that they feel could be beneficial to the village. And if you really just kind of read through it, um, it is already, pretty much, uh, already state law. It says, uh, public office law, one oh three A. So we would just be basically echoing what the state law already says. Giving us, um, some guidance on how to do the video conferencing. I mean, we're not doing it, it's something that needs to be put in place soon. As I said, most of it's already state law. Nothing, you know, timeframe. During COVID, a lot of that changed because, you know, we had no choice but to meet, uh, like zoom.
You're under state emergency though as well.
Exactly. So they, and part of that, that's why they updated all this information and passed the new law. So I thought I'd just give to you all to review, see what you thought, you know, if something you want to put in place, that's the theory. If not, um, something that lived down the road, put it in place then. I said a lot of this is already state law in place, but, um, there's a lot of people, uh, you know, I'm not, I'm going to record meetings and put it on our YouTube channel for people to watch. You know, video confer, videoing it and having live streaming out there. There's a lot of people, more and more people, um, ask about it. That's why the way, um, things seem to be going. So at some point in time, maybe something we will want to do. When that is, it's up to you guys. I mean, I like the, doing it in person and having people here. I think people have the opportunity to watch the meetings recorded. Something I get to participate, uh, from home watching it live. And that'd be cost of the village to put that in place. Uh, to get the microphones right and, and streaming isn't really conducive to a good recording. If we're going to, if we're recording profitably, I think we'd have to have a real microphone here and, uh, maybe hang the, camera from the ceiling or something to get a better view. If we're going to do a live stream. But that, that's only part of it. The other part is, uh, when the board members are unable to make it and be able to call in or, be a video conferencing.
We haven't get out of here.
Yeah, I, I'm not sure if, um, if we, you know, are you, you mean like if we?
Oh, I could go on and on for days. People keep talking.
Well, if you, I, I'm not sure if there was anything in there that says that people from home would have the ability to respond. And I think that it's just being livestreamed so they can watch it live. I don't think there's anything in the law yet that says they should have the opportunity to, um, speak through the, uh, Well, you're right. It would be, but I mean, I'm not sure. I wouldn't be surprised if someday that is the case.
Well, in the world that I live in, this is becoming very commonplace. Um, I don't have a problem with live video conferencing for the community to watch during our sessions. That's my input. I don't think we have the technology currently, so I'd like to know what that would cost before I approve it or whatever. But if there's a way to figure that out, what we would need, the technology. I think it would be beneficial for homebound citizens and during bad weather, you know, if they wanted to come, they can't. I think there's some benefits to it, so. And in my work every day, this is, most people, fifty percent of my staff are working from home on a regular basis. So, I mean, it's just the way of where we're going. So that's my opinion.
Can you give us a ballpark to do what it would cost to implement this?
Yes.
And then we can come back to the board members here and tell them and then, uh,
It should probably shouldn't take much, but, you know, it's updated.
I'm not sure if there's a way to hook that camera into a laptop and, and then do it that way. Check that.
This would be, uh, more of a good person, but technology has, uh.
It's more of the service that you're going to use probably. And I know that we do already have web access to certain, I mean, we probably use S E agency or service or whatever.
Right. Yeah, our phone or WebEx.
Do it through there. An iPad probably would be sufficient.
So being a local law, we would have to have a public hearing. So we'd have to be advertised. So let's see what the figures are and we'll come back to this. Probably at the next meeting, we, you know, address this again and, uh, get the figures and, uh, we can vote on it at that, at that meeting.
So is this? I'm sorry.
Whether to, uh, you know, but if it's, you know, like you're saying, it's state law, it's, it's going down here, so.
Well, right. Uh, state law doesn't say that we have to video, uh, livestream it.
It's giving us authority to do it.
Right. It says, you know, just kind of giving us the guidance of how it should be done.
Okay.
Moving to the next round.
Long.
Where we're going as a society.
It speaks a lot about what the rules are for if you guys kind of, you know, are, are here. Right. How to do that. That's changed over the last couple of years too.
Still be three of us here though, even with this law, right?
Yes.
Unless there's a state in Brooklyn.
Yeah.
So I don't know that there's a whole lot of scenarios where I, honestly, if you read through that, it's the whole thing. I don't know that there's a whole lot of scenarios where we really use it, so I would just suggest read through it again. It's not, let's move everything to zero or teams or whatever. Um, it's more maybe to accommodate Emily when she's out on pregnancy or something like that, more than anything, the way, the way I read the whole thing.
And it doesn't even look like you really can vote from.
Yeah.
I don't know. I skimmed through it. I didn't have time to read through it fully, but it was.
It used to be that, before that, there used to be, you were able to, uh, give, video in and be able to, if only you could see and hear. See what's going on. You could, you could vote. If you were just phoned, you couldn't vote. But this talks about if you're at home and you're able to, it's not an emergency. You have to have the ability of having residents come to wherever you are and, um, be there too. Which is a whole other odd scenario.
Yeah, read, read through it. It's kind of a strange scenario that we need to do. It's not modernized office, like you might think.
So the top part involved is that entire thing, that is the, the public law, that?
The, the, the top part is just Nikon's narrative.
Oh, okay.
And then under that is where it starts to come into law.
And I guess part, like, my question is, would we really need to pass this if it's already law? Like, why would we spend our time passing something that's already a law?
Yeah, I, I, that's something that they suggested, merely the country mayors. I mean, I don't think a hundred percent of it's, um, in, in state law, but if you look through it, they refer to the majority of it as already being state law. Like I said, this is something that they sent over here and I thought I would just want you guys to look at it and decide.
Table this until the next meeting, bring up the next meeting. Uh, the next thing I'd hear is the cash management and banking policy. We, uh, transfer, well, did you transfer money yet to night class? No.
Hello, I wanted to, um, make sure that the board, have we had guidance from the board? Exactly. It's, I, I didn't want to spitball and say, okay, I think this is what we should do. That should be the board banking policy, giving us guidance, how we should move money around and how much we want. Middle balance in Tompkins. So I put this together. It's fairly basic. But it outlines that, uh, the bill administrator, debit clerk, debit treasurer have the authority to transfer money to and from night class or Tompkins Bank. And that, that we can, we will only transfer that money when it comes to invoices or other bills that need to be paid. If there's anything else that needs, and for any other reason money needs to be moved, that would take a vote from the board. I just don't want to be open ended where we're moving money around at our discretion. It should be, you know, rules and rules to say. There's not going to be, I can foresee many situations where the money's going to have to be moved around when it does come to invoices. But if the board changes their mind and we need to put more into big cash dial or whatnot, uh, or other investment vehicles. Uh, interest rates are going up quite a bit, so. We went up another fifty basis points today. So my cost has been well over four percent. And I put down, the middle balance requirement on our bank account is five thousand, but I put down ten. I mean, that's up to you guys really, where you want that level to be. But I just thought a little bit of a buffer would be good.
You're only a day, a business day away from your money anyway, so. So it's, it's probably improbable that you come to the board and say, oh my God, I need more money tomorrow.
Right.
So, yeah, I, I think the way you've read that, it's going to work well. If you're comfortable with that number, yeah, I think I'm okay with that.
Yeah, because all of our money stays in the main account. And then when it comes time to pay bills, we move it from main account to, uh, accounts payable or payroll account. And, uh, so there's almost never mine those two accounts. So it's basically like the same thing. It's going to go from, everything's going to be at night class instead of our main account. Money from night class to our main account and then distribute it to either payroll or, um, accounts payable.
I think that looks good.
Courtney, I'm comfortable with your proposal, but is, can we add in at least some type of quarterly tracking report to the board?
Sure.
Just so that we have, I don't need it every month, but, you know, every three months at least a tracking that says during that quarter, this was moved.
Absolutely.
Kind of at least, so we can have updates in your report on a quarterly basis, or if you guys want a monthly, I don't know, however you want to do it.
Yeah, we can certainly, I'm sure there'll be a report where we can, uh,
Yes.
Out of night class if anyone's coming in now. Absolutely.
Great. Well done.
Any other discussion? Is there a motion to accept this resolution that we, uh, keep ten thousand dollars in Tompkins Bank and all the rest of our funds go into the night class accounts?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
I'm second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Jerry. Okay. Last thing on our agenda is the Hickory Park bathroom update. We've been working, work's been proceeding up there. The doors were just installed. All three doors have been installed, so we're weather tight now again. And, uh, probably eighty percent of the interior of the bathrooms have been, have removed out. So we can start renovating the inside. Eric's at school right now for another week. And then when he gets back though, we'll, uh, start working on the inside of the bathrooms. They're making room in the closet now, so we can go and purchase a lot of the new fixtures, toilet sinks, et cetera. So we can store them in there until we're ready to install them. We'll be going kind of Lowe's and buying the bulk of everything we're going to need, rather than run back and forth, back and forth. I told the guys, let's get a good list together and get as much of it at one time, you know, rather than run back and forth. Which is time consuming. So they're on board with that. They're looking forward to this project and, uh, the next thing we need to do is to get the electric panel inside. We've got the underground wires coming into it now. For the new service, we need to install the electric panel. And I have a heater at home with two forty watt or two hundred forty volt. I think it's a two thousand watt heater.
Chin.
No, no. Uh, I have an extra one at home though. That I'm going to bring to the park. We can install that in there and that'll heat both sides of that. For the winter time, that way the guys can work in there all through the winter and they'll, they'll heat in there. So it's going along well. Like I said, the doors look great on the front of the building now. We've got the one in the back for the maintenance area. It's going to come together. We're all excited, so.
Even the whole doors have to come off, right?
Yeah, we're going to take those out and frame them. That's all getting sided over anyways. But yeah, in order to put siding and we'll, we'll take it out, put some studs in there, apply wood over them and, and side over. Both on the inside and outside of it covered over, so.
Oh, okay. There's cameras there, right? On the bathrooms or on the bathrooms?
They're on the poles.
Looking at the bathrooms?
Yeah. It's going well. Okay, anything else before we adjourn? Okay. Motion to adjourn?
That's your, that's your.
No, you have the honors. I'll second it. I'll second what Paul said.
I'll second what Paul said.
I'll make the motion.
Your second. Emily, all those in favor?
Aye.
Sorry, that's your.
Thank you.